How'd you do it?
That was when we were down to Florida. Karen's vacation, Karen's birthday.
Network error, network not available.
No.
It was two and a half. You got it?
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Hey, Patrick, how you doing? Good.
Thank you.
Let's make this quick.
I think maybe somebody was getting a proclamation.
I understand that.
My good side.
I get it. The rescuers.
It's really good. We had a couple of events there.
Done.
We talked about it today.
Good evening. We'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order Monday, November the 6th, at seven o'clock PM, and certainly want to welcome all of you that are in attendance. If we could just take a moment for a solid meditation, please. Thank you. Recognize Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are privileged tonight during this Veterans Day week to have with us a veteran of World War II. Dr. John H. Lucas served in the Asiatic Pacific Theater of World War II and is here tonight to share with us and to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
John, I didn't recognize you with that hat on. You took it off there. That's John Lucas. Got you. Thank you. Well, ask the clerk, she would call the role, please.
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cole-McFadden.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
Here.
We have several ceremonial items to present this evening. The first is, is there a paraguayan? It was on my list as one of the ones that's going to be presented this evening. Let me ask Dr. Glenda Clare if she would. Do you want me to please? Thank you. This recognizes a day of appreciation to grand family heads of household. I need to be a part of that. And speaks to whereas according to Generations United 2017, nearly 2.6 million children live in households headed by a grandparent or other relative. Whereas in these families, often referred to as kin care, kinship care or grandfamilies, parents are usually absent and biological relatives such as grandparents, siblings, aunts, uncles, cousins, or great-grandparents bears primary responsibility for the well-being and rearing of children in the family. Whereas according to the Generations United 2017, more than 25% of all children in foster care system live with relative caregivers. For every child raised in the foster care system, 20 children are raised by grandparents or other relatives outside of the system. 57% of relative caregivers are in the workforce and have provided primary care for more than five years, saving taxpayers more than $6.5 billion each year by keeping children out of the foster care system. Whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau 2015, grand facts, state fact sheets for grand families 2017, more than 226,000 North Carolina children, more than 3,000 in Durham, North Carolina, under the age of 18, live as members of grand families headed by a grandparent or other relatives. Therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, hereby proclaim November 17th, 2017, as a day of appreciation to grand family heads of household in Durham and hereby urge all citizens to recognize grandparents, siblings, aunts, uncles, cousins, or great-grandparents with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. We thank you for the personal sacrifice of your time, talent, and treasure to benefit children and your commitment to family. And witness by hand, Corps of Civilian Service of Durham, North Carolina, this is the sixth day of November 2017. I'm going to present this to you for any comments.
I am doing this at this time because I really think that it's important that we acknowledge the sacrifices that people make to preserve family. So we have grandparents, siblings, aunts, uncles, and cousins who sacrifice their time, their treasure, just so that they can make sure the children and their families are safe. Unfortunately, those people that do that don't get a lot of support. So on this day, November the 17th, we're going to first acknowledge them and say thank you. But we're also in 2018 going to start a support group for them and provide counseling and other services because they very much need that, especially if they're going to keep children out of the foster care system. We want to keep them at home. So I hope that if you know anyone who is raising a child that's not their own child, but a child in their family, that you will say thank you to them. And if you want one of the certificates that we're giving out of appreciation, please contact me. I've got a Facebook page that is called It Takes More Than Love. It takes more than love. So please contact me and I will definitely get a certificate to you so that you can acknowledge appreciation to those people that are raising children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask James Carlton. Introduce all you guys. This represents a resolution recognizing Durham Community Trail Watch Volunteers. Whereas the Durham Community Trail Watch, known as DCTW, group was formed on November 3rd, 2012 by the Community Resource Unit of the Durham Police Department to create a team of trail residents, volunteers to help monitor the American Tobacco Trail in Durham. Whereas over the past five years, Trail Watch Volunteers have reported almost 10,000 hours of monitoring on the hiking and biking trails in Durham City and Durham County, with 70 currently registered members and 20 members actively monitoring the trails every month. Whereas in addition to monitoring the American Tobacco Trail, Trail Watch Volunteers spend their time on the Third Fork Creek Trail, the Eldbury Creek Trail System, the Warren Creek and Stadium Drive Trails, the Al Bueller Trail, and the Sandy Creek Trail System. Whereas Trail Watch activities include participating in the Durham Parks and Recreations Adopted Trail Program, hosting the monthly Full Moon Fever Bike Ride, participating in local community events, and setting up an education station along the American Tobacco Trail to educate trail users on trail adequate and how safely share the trails. Whereas during their monitoring efforts, DCTW has been seen a decrease in illegal trail activity, including approximately 20 calls to 911 in its first year, reduced only two calls to 911 in the last two years. Whereas Trail Watch Volunteers work with the city's police and Durham Parks and Recreation Departments to report and repair trail hazards and respond to conditions that may threaten or lessen a sense of public safety on the trail. Whereas the coordination and support for recruitment and registration, website and social media support has been transitioned from the Durham Police Department to Durham Parks and Recreation. Now therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, in honor of the Durham Community Trail Watch's fifth anniversary, hereby proclaim the week of November 6th, 2017, as Durham Community Trail Watch Week in Durham, and I'd urge all residents to recognize the achievements the Durham Community Trail Watch has made to our community and commend the volunteer group for an outstanding service to the residents of Durham. I also encourage other residents of Durham to follow their lead and to join them either as Durham Community Trail Watch Volunteers or just to enjoy Durham's trail system. Witness by hand, Corps of Civilian Service of Durham, this is the sixth day of November 2017. I'm going to present this and we comment and introduce.
You very much.
Right. Thanks. I'd like to thank Mayor Bell, the city manager, deputy city manager, and the city council for their, for this honor and for their support that they've given us over the past five years. I'd also like to thank the Durham Police Department and their Community Resource Unit for the support they've provided us since 2012. Furthermore, I'd like to thank the Durham Parks and Recreation Department and their Director Rhonda Parker for their past and ongoing support for our, for our group and for their support as our group transitions into a new relationship with the Parks Department. And finally, I would like to thank our Trail Watch Volunteers for the incredible commitment they've had over the past five years to help keep our trails clean, safe, and a valuable health, recreation, and transportation asset for the Durham community. Thank you very much. We got a picture. Charles Shul and Moffett, can you join us with the picture, please?
Yes, but why are you picking us out?
Because you guys get out there with us and help us with the work.
I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tim if she would introduce this next resolution.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is in honor to present a resolution memorializing the life of Effie J. McDonald Steele. For those of you who care to stand while I do this, please feel free to do, to do so. And this is Effie's family. And it reads, whereas Effie J. McDonald Steele was born in Rockingham, North Carolina on October 1st, 1948, to John McDonald Senior and Rosemary Galbreth McDonald. And whereas a longstanding resident of Durham, Effie attended Durham Public Schools and graduated from Hillside High School in 1966. And whereas Effie worked as a community organizer beginning in the late 1960s with Operation Breakthrough, the first national anti-poverty program. And whereas Effie co-chaired the Religious Coalition for Nonviolent to Durham, a faith-based organization that practices a unique brand of hope and unity. And whereas she was the Chair of the Northeast Central Durham Reinvestment Board, Inc., and provided community leadership to establish Peach, a collaborative project with North Carolina Central University. And whereas her connection to preventing gun violence was a personal one due to her daughter, Ebony Robinson, being shot and killed as a result of domestic violence. And whereas she was a member of Mount Zion Christian Church for over 40 years and having served on several organizations. Her family, colleagues, and friends described Effie as a caring, devoted, and passionate and extraordinary person. And she was known by her grace, humor, her welcoming heart, and her love for Durham and her dedication to community. And whereas she was a consistent advocate warrior against injustices in our world and for those who were unable to fight for themselves. And whereas Effie is survived by her daughters Sandra D. Steele Smith and Tanya Wystill, foster daughter Jeremy Farrell, and siblings Gloria, James, and John. Her grandchildren, Zakiya, Michaela, and Tori. Nieces, nephews, aunts, uncles, cousins, and many other loved ones will miss her. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Durham City Council that this city council pauses in a moment of silence in memory of Effie J. McDonald Steele. That this governing body pays tribute to her life and her contributions to the community. That this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this governing body. That a certified copy of this resolution be presented to the family. Effie was a real warrior and a woman on whose shoulders so many of us stand. She is a living example of what sacrifice really means, and our young people need to use her life as one that they can mimic. Do you want to make some comments? Who's going to make the comments? Okay, Gloria. So Gloria Nottingham will represent the family.
The Steele McDonald Smith family, thank you for honoring a mother, sister, aunt, and grandmother who loved Durham and believed the committee she chaired and was involved in could affect change in our city. They were dear to her heart. Again, we thank you.
I wish that we could stand in honor of this great woman who did so much to make Durham what it is today.
I'd like to recognize any of colleagues on the council for comments. Councilman Reese, Moffett, and Shul, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind folks that tomorrow's Election Day here in the City of Durham, we are electing a new mayor and three members of the Durham City Council. Turnout so far in early voting was not awesome, and I'm hoping that turnout tomorrow will be awesome. Tomorrow, because it is Election Day, folks will need to vote in their polling place and not at one of the early voting sites. And thanks to the great work of the Durham Committee, specifically Ricky Hart, who came to us with a proposal a couple of weeks ago, that our bus system in Durham, Go Durham Transit will be free tomorrow so that folks can use it to get to their polling places. Go Durham has set up a special website, goduramtransit.org/busttovote. It includes not only a list of the polling places, a link to the State Board of Elections where you can look up your polling place if you don't know where it is already, but also very helpfully lined up the bus routes within the city of Durham and connected those to a number of the polling places to make it that much easier for folks to figure out how to get to where they need to go to cast their vote. So I just wanted to mention that. I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
I was simply going to point out that tomorrow's Election Day, but I could not have done nearly the justice to it that, that Councilmember Reese did, so thank you.
Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I first got on council about six years ago, we had a report from our Human Resources Department on our health insurance and physical activity, and I foolishly challenged city employees at that time to a five-mile run, which has now become a six-year tradition. Only this year, for me, it was a three-mile walk.
That's my call, Reese.
I'm a little bit injured, Mr. Mayor. And, but I, the, the challenge turned out great again this year. We had some 40 people there to ride, a walk, or run. And I want to thank members of the police department who were there, a couple of members of the police department, to escort us safely across the streets. And especially want to thank D. Byers from Human Resources, as well as several other members of that department who volunteered, John Tyler, Brian Mincy, Gwen Burnett, Yolanda Seaborn, Megan Woodhouse, and also Barry Blake, so from a couple different departments there. Much appreciated. And now, as promised, I will read the, so, so we start at, at mile zero, the American Tobacco Trail. We go, I didn't, but the runners go five miles, two and a half out, two and a half back. We had a record-setting winner this year, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jonathan Hill. He ran it in 32 minutes and 27 seconds, which is pretty good for five miles, but he was, he's an AmeriCorps volunteer, so I think he's about 16 years old. But second to him, Anthony Wambui of Transportation Department, and a couple of people, a couple of employees who've been running it for every year, always the bridesmaid, never the bride, Jonathan Baker and Eric Halsted, sorry to say that. And also, I would say in the, in the, let's just say, age to speed ratio, Paul Weepke ran it in 38 minutes, really good, awesome speed. So let me just read the, the names of the people who participated. James Liani, Rebecca Martin, Dennis Farmer, Jonathan Hill, Dale McKeel, on bike, of course, Regina Youngblood, Anthony Wambui, Jonathan Baker, Eric Halsted, Elaine Van Hoos, Bertha Johnson, awesome, Paul Weepke, Randy Stewart, Renee Buchanan, Veronica Jackson, J.J. Scott with a stroller, Sean McKnight, Lloyd Schmiedler, Keegan Huffman, Sharon DeShazo, Melinda Meshko, Charlie Reese with two girls on scooter, Erin Harrison, Jeffrey Johnson, Diana Schreiber, good work, Diana, Keith Herman, Rochelle Gurley, David Boyd, always best dressed, Norma Streak Washington, Jennifer Buzzin, Ryan Wilson, Jamal Miller, Kristy West, and Keith Short. So we had a great time and many thanks, especially to D. Byers and company for organizing. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. Recognize Councilman Davis and then the Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know that we were led in the pledge of allegiance by Dr. John Harding Lucas, Sr. He is a very special friend of mine and a very special friend of people of Durham. He is a longtime principal of Hillside High School. After retirement, he was called to his alma mater to serve as the interim president of Shaw University. He is a longtime person who has been involved in the education associations. The National Education Association recognized the work that he did to bring together black and white associations in the 1960s and beyond, and they even came up with a, in the history of NEA, with a concept, and they referred to it as the Lucas Concept. And that concept has to do with the fact that in many cases, black organizations, teacher organizations were just submerged into the larger white organizations. John Lucas came up with the concert, concept that if we're going to merge and truly merge, we are not going to have one group to maintain its name and another group to lose its name and its history. He suggested that we come up with a concept where a brand-new name be put forth. So here in North Carolina, instead of having the North Carolina Teachers Association submerged into the North Carolina Education Association, he came up with the concept that we should come up with a new name, and that organization after merger was known as the North Carolina Association of Educators. That concept was put forth in lots of other southern states, Louisiana and other places, Georgia, and, and others along the way. When Dr. Lucas became a member of the Durham City School Board, and we came upon the idea of merging the city and the county schools through the bravery and the courageousness of our own mayor when he was on the county commissioners, Dr. Lucas suggested that instead of having the Durham City Schools submerged into the Durham County Schools, that we come up with a brand-new name of the school district, and thus we have in our system, the public schools, we call it the Durham Public Schools. So the Lucas Concept worked on a national level and here on the local level. Many of us know that this week is Veterans Day, and Dr. Lucas is going to be honored by several people around this, this city on Friday and Saturday and other points during the week. But I wanted to also let everybody know, as I said a few minutes ago, that he gave service during the 1940s to the United States Army and served in the Asiatic and Pacific Theater of World War II. The other thing I want to mention about him, and it's important that during this week, Dr. Lucas will have a birthday. In fact, in a little less than five hours from now, Dr. Lucas likes to say that he will enter into his 98th year on this earth. He was born on November the 7th, 1920. So that's a long time ago, but he is energetic. You see how he's pumping his fist a few minutes ago? He is very, very vibrant, and he wants to have this enthusiasm go on for another 10, 20 years or more. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to recognize my former boss, John Harding Lucas, Sr.
Eddie, you did a super job on that, and I'm just going to add one little piece to it, since you talked about his age. I occasionally have lunch at Hope Valley Diner, and I'm sitting in there and I see these young guys coming in, and the one that's got the most pep to his step is Dr. Lucas. These, these guys are almost younger than I am, but you think he was leading them along the way, and he just does it the way. You see those... those sneakers he's got on there?
I see.
Knows how to do it well. We certainly appreciate you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
May I add?
Recognize the mayor pro temp.
I must add that Mr. Lucas is a peonokle whiz. I was at the center last Friday, and I thought about you, and I thought, I will never play peonokle with you, ever.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments, members of the council? If not, we'll look at priorities first by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, good evening, everyone. Mr. Lucas, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Happy birthday. No priority items this evening.
Likewise, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
And likewise, the city clerk.
No items, Mr. Mayor.
We proceed with the agenda, first item being the consent agenda. If items can be approved with a single vote, if a member of the council, a member of the audience removes an item from the consent agenda, we'll discuss that later in the agenda. I'll just read the agenda, item number. Item one is approval of city council minutes. Item two is the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Development Authority appointments. Item three is the Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners appointment. Item four is workforce development board appointment. Item five is appointment to the Go Triangle Board of Trustees. Item six is police property and evidence room performance audit September 2017. Item seven is inventory performance audit June 2017, dated September 2017. Item eight is an item that can be found on the general business agenda as a public hearing. Item nine is amendment to contract with McCormick Baron Salazar Development, Inc., for additional environmental and construction costs related to the South Side East Phase Two project. Item 10 is Durham Chapel Hill Carville Metropolitan Planning Organization Downtown Durham Transportation Study Agreement. Item 11 is East Durham Outfall Repair and MLK Junior Parkway Outfall Relocation Contract with J.F. Wickelson Contracting Company, Inc. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the negotiation of installment finance contract and providing for certain other related matters. Item 13 is September 2017 bid report. Item 14 is Sixth Amendment to Assignment Agreement for the Durham Athletic Park Operating Agreement. Item 15 is public art and placement, placemaking contracts for Police Headquarters Complex Project. Item 16 is furniture, pictures, and equipment purchase contracts, move management service contract, and Duke Energy Service Agreement for the Police Headquarters Complex. Item 17 is the Housing Appeals Board Annual Report for Physical Year 2017. Item 18 is Stormwater Infrastructure Inventory and Assessment for Parks, Trails, and Cemeteries, SD 2017-02. Item 19 is adopt preliminary assessment roles and set public hearings before confirmation of assessment role for street completion and portions of Ravenstone and Stonehill Estate Subdivision. Item 20 is a contract, ST 289, request for qualification, RFQ for utility located services. Item 23 through 25 are items that can be found on the general business agenda as public hearings. Entertaining motion for approval, consent agenda.
Still move.
Second.
Then properly move in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
No, it's not working. On the general business agenda, public hearings, item eight, 2016 Evaluation and Assessment Report of Durham Comprehensive Plan, A170002.
Good evening to the council. I'm Laura Woods with the Durham Planning Department, and this is the fifth annual Evaluation and Assessment Report of the Durham Comprehensive Plan. The EAR is intended to rectify differences between adopted future land use maps for the city and the county, report on progress toward implementation of the comprehensive plan, proposed changes to comprehensive plan policies, propose updates to the future land use map, and summarize emerging land use and demographic trends. In 2016, six, 17 plan amendments needing rectification were approved by the Durham City Council, and three plan amendments needing rectification were approved by the Durham Board of Commissioners. These cases are listed in Table 1 of the report and shown in maps included as Attachment 1. Changes of the amount of land designated on the future land use map for particular land uses are shown in Figures 1 and 2 of the report. Largest change this year, this past year, was approval of five design districts around proposed rail stations. Design districts, as you may recall, are intended to regulate form rather than function and accommodate a mixture of urban land uses, including commercial office and higher-density residential. Concerning one of the design districts, the Lee Farm Design Districts, please note that the Joint City-City Planning Committee, at their meeting in January, indicated to staff the elected body's intention to leave Lee Valley boundaries and the future land use designations unreconciled until further stationary planning is completed and design district zoning is implemented. This year's EAR proposes changes to a number of plan policies. These are identified in Attachment 2 of your report, and by and large, these are wordsmithing, slight changes in assigned duties to different departments, or changes to department names. This year's EAR proposes changes, oh, excuse me, Attachment 3 summarizes accomplishments in implementing the comprehensive plan as described by the city and county departments involved, planning department canvases, all city and county departments responsible for implementing policies. And I do want to compliment all the departments this year. We had a very robust response rate this year. On August 7th, 2017, the Urban Open Space Plan was presented at a work session of the Durham Board of Commissioners. At that time, the Board of Commissioners recommended, or requested, a number of changes, and this was the plan that had previously been adopted by the city council. And staff brought back the revised report to the Board of Commissioners, and with certain changes which are listed in your staff report and also in the resolution. This evening, they adopted the plan, and you will need to consider rectifying the slight revision of the plan, county's version with the city version this evening. And the revised plan is attached to this report. Planning staff does recommend one significant change in the formatting of the plan. You'll note in attachment which lists all the policies which have, at this point, been accomplished. And staff recommends moving all of those policies in each chapter to the end of the chapter, leaving everything that has still to be accomplished at the front of each chapter that will make it easier for you, the elected officials, it will make it easier for staff and for the public to identify things that still need to be accomplished. And so, it's a rather simple formatting change. We do recommend it, and we hope for your approval of this evening's report, and that completes my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Public hearing is open. You've heard the staff report. I would ask first sort of questions by members of the council. Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A very thorough and excellent report. The fully implemented policies in Attachment 4. So are these policies that have been implemented over forever? I mean, these aren't just policies that are implemented this year. These are policies that have been implemented over time.
That's correct.
And all of these policies have been approved by both the council and the county commission?
That's correct.
Are there any other things that are not reconciled, except for the Lee Village situation that you mentioned?
Yes, the three, the Board of Commissioners has already acted upon this report and has reconciled their future land use map with all the plan amendments adopted by city council in 2016. And council will now need to rectify the city version with the three plan amendments that were approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2016.
Right. I'm sorry. I got that, and I appreciate it. Anything else that we're leaving hanging, I guess, is the question?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We certainly tried not to.
Yeah. And are there historical things that are hanging out there like that as well, something other than this year? I see Pat coming up.
Councilmember Shul, I believe there's only one other unrectified item, which is the 751 South Development. There was a tier change that was adopted by the county bringing into the suburban tier, and the city did not choose to rectify or to adopt that change.
Okay.
Other than that, that's the only other unrectified item.
Thanks.
And the Lee Village item Laura told you about.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Laura. The, you know, whenever you, whenever I see this, it's just an incredible body of work, complex, important, and I know it's hard to answer to two masters, the city and the county, and so I just want to appreciate what you all do in order to do that. Thank you so much. The Urban Open Space, Urban Open Space Plan, is that what you're talking about, changing the format of, Laura? Is that what you were saying?
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. Perhaps I was unclear.
Yeah.
As you know, the comprehensive plan is divided into chapters.
Yeah.
And those policies that are listed as completed
Uh huh.
in the, in the attachment of your report.
Yeah.
Those would all be moved in the comprehensive plan from active
Okay.
to their own section at the end of the chapter. That leaves everything that's still active in the front of the chapter.
Yeah.
So it makes it easier for you to identify.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, let me also then just comment quickly on the Urban Open Space Plan, which is, it's just amazing, and I just really hope we can implement it. There's so many good things in it, and reviewing it again just gave me a new sense of that, so thank you.
Other comments? Recognize Councilman Moffett.
Actually, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
If there are no more comments on the council this time, I'd recognize anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on this item. No one has signed up to speak. This is a public hearing matter, so if anyone would like to speak, now's the time. Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I would declare the public hearing to be closed, and I'll ask back for the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the resolution that's Attachment 8 in our packet.
Second?
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion here, and then call the question. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to item 23, Durham-Morrisville Annexation Agreement.
Good evening. Grace Smith with the Planning Department. I would like to take a moment to affirm that all legal notice requirements for both planning items have been carried out in accordance with the state and local laws. Affidavits for those legal notices are on file in the Planning Department. Tonight, I'm here to present the updated annexation agreement between Morrisville and Durham. In 1997, the city of Durham and the town of Morrisville entered into an annexation and utility service area agreement as permitted by state statute. The agreement covers the area in the southeastern Durham County and northwestern Wake County, where the municipal boundaries for both converge. The agreement that was adopted in 1997 expired on October 1st, 2017. We have been back and forth with Morrisville to update the agreement, mostly just boundary descriptions. There were some pins and pits that changed, so that has been taken care of. It's in Attachment 1 for your review. The town is more, the town of Morrisville actually approved the agreement on October 24th, 17, at their council meeting. If you have any questions, staff is available.
Again, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. You've heard the staff report. Other questions by members of the council on the staff report, comments. Here, and let me ask, is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this item? This is being a public hearing matter. Let the record reflect that no one asked to speak from the public. I would declare the public hearing to be closed, and I'll ask back for the council.
Move the ordinance, I guess I need to.
Ordinance and resolution.
There's one motion, and you need to move the, it's to adopt the ordinance and the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Move to item 24, Amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement with Migrate Property to LLC.
Reginald Jones with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. This item recommends the approval of a contract to amend the agreement between Migrate Property to LLC and the city of Durham related to the economic development incentive contract awarded to Migrate Property to LLC on June 6, 2016. The Office of Economic and Workforce Development recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendment to an economic development, economic incentive agreement per General Statute 158-7.1, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement amendment between Migrate Property to LLC and the city of Durham dated June 6, 2016, that would extend the deadline for the project completion to September 30, 2018. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. You've heard the staff report. Recognize the city manager on this item. If you could, Mr. Jones, could you just give a little further explanation for the reason for the extension?
There were some issues related to the ability to achieve success with the project. Engineering firm was working with the planning department, was not able to do what they needed to do, and the owners of the project had to replace that firm. There were some other issues relating to timing with loan and financing, because this is a brownfield property, and the bank required some more testing to be done. So they ran into those problems in trying to get that. The owners are here tonight, if you would like to.
That's fine. Just wanted for the record. Thank you.
Okay, you've heard the staff report. Are there comments? Recognize, is that Councilman Shul?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Shul.
Just one quick question, which is, and you could, this also applies to the next one, which is, I'm assuming we still have confidence in both of these items that the, the folks with whom we have the agreement are able to execute on these. We're pushing them both back in time. We're allowing them extra time, but are we confident that they can still execute?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Recognize Councilman Reese.
I had actually just a couple of questions for the developers, if they're here.
They're here.
I thought he said they were. If this is the appropriate time, I'd love to do that.
Hi, I'm Kami O'Voorhees. I live at 220 East Knox Street.
Hi there.
Hi.
First of all, appreciate you being here tonight. Appreciate your willingness to come and talk to me a little bit. Unfortunately, I was absent the evening of June 6, 2016, and was unable to participate in the, in the public hearing around that, this matter at that time. But I did watch the video later on, and I noticed, I remember that my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, asked you some, I think, difficult questions about the use to which the property would be put in a, if the, this project were to be successful. And one of the reasons you were unable to provide assurances about the types of folks who would be hired to work there, whether or not folks in the neighborhood would be hired to work there, whether or not they would be paid a living wage, for example. The reason you couldn't talk about that very much was because you're not developing it yourself to operate a restaurant. You were just developing the project to be the landlord. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Since, that's been, gosh, about a year and a half ago now, right?
Yeah, a year.
So has the, has the situation changed at all with respect to the prospective tenants?
Yes. So we do have a tenant in place. We have We have a signed lease and we did end up choosing a local minority and woman-owned business who are actually residents of East Durham. So, we've hopefully addressed some of the concerns that Councilwoman Johnson had.
Okay. And have you spoken to them about the concerns that were raised at the meeting concerning paying their employees a living wage?
Yes, we did talk about that. So, we had conversations around living wage and also hiring people from the neighborhood and they seemed agreeable to both things and I feel pretty confident that that's what they will move forward with.
I appreciate you being here and taking the time to answer my questions.
Thank you.
Are there other questions by members of the council? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this item? Again, this is a public hearing. No one had signed up to speak. Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak. I would declare the public hearing to be closed and ask back for the council.
Move the item.
Second.
Then properly move in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Move to item twenty-five, Second Amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement with A&amp;J Capital LLC.
This item recommends the approval of a contract to amend the agreement between A&amp;J Capital LLC, A&amp;J Capital, and the city of Durham related to the economic development incentive contract awarded to A&amp;J Capital on February 2nd, 2015. The contract was amended on October 17th, 2016 with a contract period that would end on December 31, 2017. The Second Amendment provides for the company to complete the project by June 30, 2018. The Office of Economic and Workforce Development recommend that the council conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendment to an economic development, economic incentive agreement per General Statute 158-7.1 and to authorize the city manager to execute a Second Amendment with A&amp;J Capital LLC and the city of Durham dated February 2nd, 2015 that would extend the deadline for project completion to June 30, 2018. Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. This is staff report has been made.
Again, Mr. Jones, for the record, could you provide the explanation for why the second extension is needed? Thank you.
The first challenge that the project faced was the untimely death of the architect who was coordinating all the activities with the site planning. So, there was a lapse in time in order to find someone else that was competent enough to work within our planning department to get that done. All the other pieces of this contract and the project have been moving forward and so that slowed down the delay in order that it would happen next month and that's why the request is coming now.
Thank you.
Other, other comments or questions by members of the council? If not, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Again, this is a public hearing matter. Let the record reflect that no one else asked to speak. I would declare the public hearing to be closed and ask back for the council.
Move on.
Second.
Then properly move in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close, close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. At the start of the meeting, that concludes all the items that are on the agenda. There was a young man that wanted to have some time to speak. I don't know if he's still in, okay. If you can come to the podium to your, my right, state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bryn Berenshausen. I live at 5514 Penrith Drive. I'm here tonight because I think, like a lot of people, I'm devastated by what happened in Texas over the weekend and am very concerned about the epidemic of gun violence in this country. And to be quite honest, I don't feel safe in my own country with the rampant examples of mass shootings that have happened in my lifetime. And I've been told repeatedly that you need to get involved in your local politics, so I'm here asking my city council, what are you doing to protect the citizens of our city? What can we do within the law? I don't know what our state law permits us as a city to do to put restrictions on assault rifles and these weapons that have been repeatedly used to slaughter people. Fourteen children died the other day. It's horrible and we can't let the status quo go because people are losing their lives. Is there something this body is willing to do? Do you have the ability to do anything within our state law to combat this problem?
Well, I'm going to defer to our city attorney, but I can tell you that I, for one, am a part of a group called Merits Against Illegal Guns and we have done all that we have tried to do in trying to diminish the opportunity for illegal guns to get in the hands of persons that shouldn't have them. Quite frankly, our hands are tied to a certain extent by what we can do, not only at the federal level, but at the state level. But having said that, I'm going to defer to the city attorney for any legal comments he might want to make on that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And over the course of the years, the General Assembly has taken more and more control away from local governments to be able to do anything on this. In fact, they have taken up the entire field of anything remotely related to gun controls. So, this, local governments really have very limited, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would assist you and, and the concern that you've raised, that I think we're all concerned with, but there have been efforts to talk to the General Assembly about some things, but so far, there really haven't been any, certainly nothing back to the local governments for us to be able to do anything in this field, which is unfortunate.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
We're even prescribed by law from, like, determining where people cannot carry guns, right?
That's correct.
We can't keep them out of our own parks, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Recognize Councilman Moffitt.
I want to first thank you for coming tonight, for your concern. I share your concern and I know that every one of my colleagues does as well. It's incredibly frustrating. It's, but, but their concern is not just for the horrific events that happened like yesterday, but for the daily gun violence that occurs.
Agreed.
In, in, in our city, here in Durham. And so, we're all open to more suggestions. We, I think we've all done what we know to do and, and we share your concern. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Again, appreciate you taking the time and if you have thoughts in terms of what can be done, we have a General Assembly, we have members from the General Assembly that are here in Durham. You might share that with them also, what they might be able to do.
And, and the council, the new council, the council will develop a legislative agenda as, as we have done every year and ask, you know, that's an agenda that we'll put forward through our elected officials, so that's another opportunity to advance ideas.
Are there any other comments? If not, the meeting's adjourned at 7:55 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go vote, somebody.